Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda? All in favor? Minutes. And a motion to approve the evening minutes. First being the conference room, September fifteenth, seven P M. Everybody had a chance to look over those entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Regal, all in favor? Executive session. Seven forty-nine P M, September fifteenth, twenty fifteen, conference room. Entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Mr. Regal? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
This way, you have to sign.
All right, authorization for payment of bills. Everybody had a chance to look over the bills? If so, then entertain a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
All in favor? Citizens Communications. From Washington, D.C. Dear Board members, I approve, I appreciate your continued support on my journey thus far as a... State officer, there you go. My leadership training here in Washington, D.C. has been amazing and I can't wait to bring what I've learned back to Knox County. Sincerely, Gabby Shakina. Administrative reports.
I just have a couple things. Which some of you probably haven't seen, but we've broken ground considerably now on our new softball field. Today, they ended up, I think, laying down some of that black dirt, kind of around the outfield. We're going to maybe put some grass down at some point, but you kind of actually see the shape of the softball field out there now. So it's pretty exciting. That's really taken shape on me just within the line. I think it started Thursday was last week. And if you walk kind of out there, or you can drive on the highway, and you can see kind of the scale of how much dirt they've actually moved. They had to build that back side up there in the left field corner quite a bit. So they made quite a bit of progress on it. I think that'll be a really nice facility once we get everything finished up. But it's kind of exciting seeing the progress. Another thing I want to make sure I mentioned is, obviously, our football team finished Dry Rivers undefeated this year. I think it was the first conference championship from what I know in thirty-five years. So a pretty, pretty nice run for those guys this year. So congratulations to our coaches and players and parents too.
One thing I wanted to bring to the board's attention, the middle school and high school student councils participated and organized a change drives last week for the Walton family who suffered the loss of their home. And we paid them the change to the bank and we presented them with almost eight hundred dollars. That the elementary, all the buildings combined contributed to that. So we're very proud of our students for stepping up and helping out that family. And seventh grade had a successful field trip to Nabeed today. So didn't get rained on except on the bus ride home, so that's a good trip.
Okay, the elementary. We had our reading and math night on October eighth, a couple weeks ago. We had a record number of students attend that, a hundred and thirteen students. And to put it in perspective, last year, our largest group to attend was about sixty. So it's about double the size what we had last year. In the past, we've always offered, the parent, we've offered a presentation for the parents. And usually, we were lucky if we have five or six parents show up. This year, we had forty parents come. And our training was to teach them how to use some of the tools that we are doing on the iPads. And so they were really interested in learning how to use the technology that they're kindergarten and first and second grade children are using at school. So we were real pleased with the turnout at our parent night as well with that event. Eagle shirts, everybody's K through twelve has an eagle shirt, compliments of spirit. So hopefully, we will be taking a picture, a spirit picture in the next couple of weeks out on the football field with our students and celebrating some good old fashioned eagle spirit. And we had a mad science assembly where the, it was from Saint Louis, PTO sponsored it. The students were learning about science concepts behind air and different kinds of gases. And they were pretty excited about the things that they were learning and it was entertaining. We also had, they actually had a lot of volunteers go down, which kids always want to volunteer to be a part of that. And then we also had, on October ninth, our elementary social committee organized a staff tail day. And we had a huge turnout for that. Mr. Turgeon and Mr. Brown were our grilling experts that evening. And we had almost a hundred people sign up. I know we had over eighty-five people there because at one time I counted, so there were a lot of folks there.
Big success. Couple things. This week or was it last week? Today's Tuesday, so it's last week. We got invited at Truman to present at the RPDC about technology and what we're doing with our school with technology. So myself and Jennifer went and presented some of the things they wanted to hear about, you know, finances and infrastructure and professional development and what types of things are we doing. So we went and presented and it was really well received. Everybody really kind of had a lot of questions and enjoyed the presentation. And it went extremely well. We started our presentation with video. We've had some students do some interviews and we've had some teachers put some video segments. So we just kind of put a movie together just to kind of incorporate some of the things we're doing. And at this point, our multimedia class is going to take over the movie and just really fine tune it and just kind of make it look a little more professional, maybe add some things in there and take some things off. But this is what we have so far, so I'll go ahead and project it up there and let you watch the movie. It's seven minutes long.
What are you doing most about your school? What's that?
It's when we get a good morning, we get off the bus before school starts.
What are you talking about this morning?
We get to like dance and stuff, and have fun activities and stuff.
Does the school environment allow you to be creative and problem solving during your classes?
Yeah, we have iPads. We can use Notability now and we can, you know, just do whatever we really need to do with it. Just math, we can do science with them.
Tell me about your school, what do you like about it?
I like the iPads because it makes commercials.
What are you doing now with your iPads?
I'm over there, I like to face talk. It's this app because we're making commercials. That's exciting. Just for the library, we can use it. It gives us free time.
Technology help you learn?
iPads, they help me organize all my things so I can find them easier and they also like see things visual way.
We asked several elementary math课teachers how technology impacted their teaching and this is what they said.
How has technology impacted the education system in our school?
Well, I feel like students are much more engaged and able to really think outside the box. Students are also able to do work at their own pace and choose different ways to do their work, different ways to do projects.
I live here in my classroom. I use it every day. It's very interactive. The students are allowed to get up because our smart board. We use a lot of the iPads. We use QR codes for my children having a seat and me teaching. They're doing a lot of the teaching with their iPads too. We use our reflector on the smart board. And it's just a great tool for the kids interacting and having fun.
They are allowed to use the iPad to create the finished product and no two finished products look the same. They can use a variety of apps, websites. They can do app smashing where they use several apps to create one finished product. And they're so excited to get their hands on the iPad. It's not just that they use it for games. A lot of people think that they're just using to play games and they're learning tools. It gets kids excited about learning and they love to come to school each day so that they can use all of this amazing technology that we have in our classrooms.
Has technology impacted your classroom?
I think technology has impacted my classroom, making students a lot more engaged than they would before. And we get to do a lot of fun, different activities, have a jazz of projects. So hopefully, they like it.
One of the most exciting transformations I have seen in education at Knox County Elementary School is the implementation of technology into the everyday classroom.
One of the benefits we have seen through equipping our kids with technology is the fact that it levels the playing field for all of our high school students. We have students from several different walks of life that come into our building. And by equipping them with technology, by putting these devices in our students' hands, we have seen it really takes down a lot of roadblocks that might interfere with student learning. So when our students are in the classroom, they're equipped with these devices, they can focus on the number one thing they need to when they're here at school, which is learning.
Students become savvy with technology. It's exciting to be in a first grade classroom and hear students talking about whether or not they want to do a pick collage or a prezi for a particular project. Our students are engaged more because of our technology.
They challenge our teachers to be able to come up with lessons to help challenge our students and really increase their achievement through the use of that technology.
This is what education used to look like. The Knox County One-to-One Technology Initiative has made Knox County R1 a leader in the race of innovative technology to enhance the future of their student learning environment. Knox County has evolved from the traditional paper pencil lecture style of instruction to using technology devices and applications to enhance student learning to adapt to our ever-changing twenty-first century world we live in today. With employers and educational facilities looking for students and employees that have the ability to change with technology, Knox County students will be the top-notch selections for those schools and employers to be reaching for. Their students use these iPads to create videos and projects to showcase their depth of knowledge. Teachers can use a three-D printer and touchscreen television in the new and improved Knox County High School library to increase the way their students learn. Students do not all learn the same, so teachers can't always teach the same. And the technology enhancements that Knox County R1 has implemented has allowed them to make strides and take chances for the better of their students, community, nation, and world. Students at Knox County are ready for the challenges of this new technology-driven world.
So that's the start of the presentation. And like I said, the multimedia class is going to take it, dissect it, and add to it and change it. And it may be something that changes over time. We also have a link to a QR code. And we have some flyers made up, but we're also going to put the QR code on the back of our business cards. And so if someone wants to see the, you know, what are you doing with technology? We can hand them a business card and they can look at the QR code and kind of get an idea of what we're about. So there's a lot of people asking questions about what we're doing with technology. And it's pretty exciting to be able to show them and know that people are, kind of want. Troy school districts planning on coming up here to see what we're doing. They'd like to mirror what they're doing after, you know, what we've been doing. So that's kind of exciting to have a big school district like that come see what we're doing so they can kind of, you know, learn from what we've done and kind of implement the same thing. Another project, I put the multimedia class on was our bus company, Thomas Buses, sent an email out to all their customers and said, "We're trying to put a calendar together and we're having a competition. The top six pictures selected will win a thousand dollars. So please submit a picture." And their only requirement is that it has a Thomas Bus in it and that the theme is "Back to School." So on homecoming day, we felt, have the football players in football uniforms and cheerleaders in cheerleading uniforms. So we kind of put together this plan to gather all the students by the buses even though we're not coming to school. This was the end of the day, but it still kind of looks like it could be the beginning of the day and they're all coming to school. Supposed to find out sometime this week if we win the prize. The students that put this picture together and put the quote on there asked me, "So what's the prize?" And I said, "It's a thousand dollars." And they say, "Well, Mr. Turgeon, what are you going to do with that thousand dollars?" And I said, "Well, actually, I was kind of thinking about putting that thousand dollars towards putting Wi-Fi on one of our trip buses. So if you have late nights or something like that." And they're like, "Oh, cool. We could do our homework on the buses." And I said, "Yes, you could on this trip bus." So that's kind of what we're looking into and if we win this, we pay quite a bit towards Wi-Fi.
I should have told that before.
They did, they did a good job, so. So hopefully, I'll find out sometime this week and maybe we won the prize. And plus, our picture will be on the calendar, so we have to request more calendars this year just so our picture can be in there. Couple other things. One of the things we've been working on is, over the last eight years, nine years I've been here, it's frustrating that we have all these different systems in place. Like our dining system is completely separate from our student system, which is completely separate from our parent link, which is completely separate from what we do with transportation. So if someone changes an address or a phone number, you have to go in four separate systems and change it. And how do we know who's changing what? Plus, you pay a fee for all of those. And really, GoRegStar, which is what we use for our student information system, has been, to say the least, frustrating. And I think not just me and the principals in working with core data, but I think the secretaries have not been happy with GoRegStar. So we've been looking into different systems. Actually, Steve started last year, looked into several different systems. And I sent emails out to all the superintendents to try and find out what people prefer. And a company called Tyler's Cis-K Twelve is probably the company that most schools are gravitating towards just because they're staying on top of what Desi's mandating as far as reports. So we've looked into Tyler's Cis-K Twelve, sent the secretaries over to Highland to see how that works and they just fell in love with it. Steve has sat through a webinar and he really likes it. Then they came and presented to the administrators and I think the administrators fell in love with it. What I like about it, number one, the core data reporting would have made our lives a lot easier. With GoRegStar, we had to do so much data entry and I just, you know, it was quite cumbersome. Going to Tyler's Cis-K Twelve, probably I'll have it on the agenda next month to approve. Currently, with GoRegStar, the dining system and all the other programs that parent link and all of those, which Tyler's Cis-K Twelve does it all, we're spending just a little bit over ten thousand dollars a year just for those programs. Tyler's Cis-K Twelve, we'd be spending about nine thousand dollars a year, but everything's all in the same place. So it's easier for everybody. You know, there's only one person that has to do data entry because it's all in the same place. As a matter of fact, there's some components on this that we don't have. One is called, what is it called?
Pulse?
Pulse. And what it is, you can take any data off your system and put it in a, put it on a screen and you can compare assessment data. You can compare financial data if you use the financial side, but we're not going to go there, not yet because I'm not switching Marcia from one system to another. But you can compare all kinds of data and put charts together and it's just really pretty neat, pretty neat aspect when you look at that. And that's something that is part of this that is really going to allow our teachers to drill down to, you know, here's, here's what's going on. You can look at attendance data, you can look at dropout data, you can, just all kinds of things. Another component of it is the dining system's right in it, you know. So everything's right there, easy to use. So that's something we're kind of excited about it. Of course, upfront, there's the training. The first three years, it's more like thirteen thousand instead of nine thousand, but that's because of the training component. But if you project out over the next ten years, we're actually going to save quite a bit of money. They're also working on a teacher evaluation component, which is another thing that we have that we pay a fee every year for our teacher evaluation tools. So we're able to reduce the budget and that's kind of where it started, is looking at ways to reduce our expenditures. And this, I think, is a great way that we're going to be able to reduce our expenditures and also maybe free up, you know, a lot of employees' time, you know. Like the IT department does all the data entry for a lot of GoRegStar, a lot of parent link. They do all of that and it's just a lot of information, the dining system. So that's going to free up a lot of that stuff that, so we're kind of excited about that. And I'll have more of the numbers and everything next time when we have the actual quote to approve. And I think that's all I have for right now, so.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm positive.
All right. Looks like we have no unfinished business. New business, no removal quotes. Okay, let's see. Removal specifications. Blade must have a three-quarter inch to one-inch high skids or rollers. No snow pushed or piled along any of the fences or buildings. Snow must be removed in the morning before seven fifteen A.M. when school will be in session. Says better may want to walk the grounds with Gary Mayer prior to submitting a bid. This is Nichols and Sons, custom hire, new dining. Parking lots and driveways and sidewalks, five hundred and fifty dollars. Sidewalks only, one hundred and ninety dollars. Parking lots and drives only, with no sidewalks, for three ninety. And a spread chat is a hundred and ninety. This is from the Garden Spot, which would be Clyde Wyler. Parking lot and drives and sidewalk, five fifty. Parking lot and drives only, three sixty-five. Sidewalk only, one ninety-five, and a spread chat would be two hundred. I believe that's all the, that's the one, too.
Fair, as far as the first part, doing all of it, they're both at five hundred and fifty. If it's just the parking lot and drives, the Garden Spot's three sixty-five, parking lot in Nichols is three ninety. lot in Nichols is three ninety. If they do sidewalks only, it's a hundred and ninety from Nichols, a hundred and ninety-five from Garden Spot, and then the chat for Nichols is a hundred and ninety versus the Garden Spot, two hundred. So, some are higher, a little bit higher, a little bit lower. We were really happy with the Garden Spot last year and that's what our recommendation is, to go with the Garden Spot.
Anybody have anything else in discussion?
Somebody.
All right.
Second.
Parrish, Mr. Parrish, second. Carolyn.
Yeah.
Sorry. All in favor? Bus routes. Bus routes with ridership.
Okay, on the bus routes, we do this every year, and this is, keep in mind, this is the preliminaries, so we have our student count day, and so when you, at the beginning of the year, you count if a student rides at least once that week, then you count them. So, as you look at it, the total, three hundred and forty-nine students out of our four hundred and eighty, last count was four hundred and eighty-three students, that seems kind of low. We do have a lot of students that drive into high school and we do have a lot of students that drop, or students that get dropped off by the parents. Our bus times, we still have, bus times are pretty well leveled out. We do have one that's pretty short and a couple that are fairly short, but for the most part, they're between forty-five minutes and sixty-five minutes. You know, the one that's sixty-five minutes, depending on who rides, it could end up being a little bit longer, but for the majority of the time, that student doesn't ride. So, we kind of like to keep that around, you know, sixty minutes at the most. So, we're doing a pretty good job with the way the county's spread out, kind of makes it hard to make it short bus rides. And the ones, some of the ones, you know, if you look at some of the ones that have less students, you know, it depends on what the route is, you know, if it's, you're going to the extremes of the county or you're running D-Ridge, it's kind of hard to load up a bunch of students because you're not going through a township, so that's our preliminary route and just needs to be approved.
Entertain a motion to approve the bus routes.
So.
Hold. Second. One second.
You got it.
Spring 2015 MAP and the EOC results.
Okay, as you know, last year was the first year we had taken the MAP grade level tests in digital format. We will, last year we took those test questions, were from the Sback, the Smart Balance Consortium. They will no longer be from Sback, the state is going to take tests this year from the Data Recognition Corporation, which has been purchased by CTV, which was formerly owned by CTV McGraw-Hill, which we're familiar with that. So, our test questions for this year will be from a different company, will be delivered in the same way. They will be used, using the e-direct system for our elementary students and the quest offer high school students. Our information from last spring can be looked at in two different ways. The first is growth, and that would be comparing students' performance from one year to the next, as in the third graders who took the test in Communication Arts one year and how they performed the second year when they took that test. Some things to note is that for grade level testing for Communication Arts, our Knox County students improved their total number scoring and proficient in advanced in the fourth grade, the fifth grade, the sixth grade, the seventh, and the eighth grades. So, that was, we showed growth in all of those areas. Grade level testing for math, Knox County improved their total number of students scoring and proficient in advanced in the fourth and the fifth grade. Obviously, they couldn't show an improvement in the third grade as that's the first year they take the test, so that's why that was not included. On our EOCs, our English I showed an improvement from a sixty-one point nine percent in 2014 to a seventy-six point four percent. Our English II went down a little bit from seventy-seven point five percent to seventy-three. Our Algebra I showed a decrease from sixty-nine percent to a thirty point eight percent. We did not take the test in Algebra II because it was a transition year, and we didn't have students enrolled in that, in that course last year as we're transitioning our math program. Geometry, we went up from a seventy-two point two percent to an eighty-one point four percent this year. Biology, there was growth from sixty point four to seventy-five point seven. American history, we didn't take that last year, and our government was a sixty-nine point three percent, and the previous year was an eighty-eight point four percent. And as far as performance goes, performance is where you compare your state to what the state average is. And in Communication Arts, we were slightly below state average in all but the sixth grade, and the sixth grade was above. In math, we were above state average in the third, the fourth, and the eighth grade, and we were below the state average in grades five, six, and seven.
All right, thank you. It's going to be kind of one of those things in the next two years. This year and next year, DESI are pretty, are determining that they're probably going to be whole harmless years because of the changing of the test, meaning that if schools don't do well, then they can go back to the prior three years and use those test scores. So, when the state's saying, "We don't know if we'll count these scores or not because it's a new test," so it kind of makes it hard, and next year's going to be a, this year will be the same, same company giving the test. The test, they say, is the same questions, but it's a different, different test, essentially. And then the next year, we're going to have new standards, so another new test in two more years, so it's kind of going to be one of those where it's going to be hard to compare what's going on, you know, from year to year, so.
And it's especially difficult this year because the state was forbidden from using anything from Sback in the middle of our testing season after we'd taken the test, but in the middle of our testing season as far as results. So, usually, our teachers get specific information about what areas need improvement, say, in a Communication Arts class or a math class, but none of that detailed drill-down information is available this year, and our results did not come in in the expected 10-day window as well. And then next year, they're projecting that our results will not be back until November, so you can imagine a classroom teacher can't really start out her beginning of her year with testing information that's reliable if she doesn't get it until November. That's, you know, pretty much halfway through a class, a school year for our teachers. So, it is kind of a, it's a precarious time in the assessment world with the state and don't know what to expect.
All right. APR 2014.
What you guys have is kind of a summary of what our APR, I guess, score was. One thing that's new this year is, last year was the first year we gave ACT to all of our juniors. That information is now, the results of that 11th grade ACT exam is now up on, or as part of our APR, just kind of put it front and center, that's new, hasn't been up there before. Couple of things I want to point out, probably the biggest positive here is that we went up almost five percentage points from the same, same point last year, scored a ninety-five point four percent versus just a ninety point seven percent year before. The biggest increase, and I've got a little kind of comparison I'll throw up here so you guys can kind of see, the biggest increase that I've seen is in our academic achievement. As you can see, from 2014 to 2015, we went up almost 10% or almost 11%, just in our academic achievement, which is essentially percentage of students are proficient in advanced on EOCs. Our subgroup achievement, one of those areas that, you know, these are students that have a lot of barriers in front of them, but we continue to try to find ways to improve that, but we have made some strides from 2014 to 2015. College and career readiness is kind of a tricky one. There's three areas, three components of that. The one where we got, we got some points taken away was in our assessments area, which essentially has to do with, you know, this blanket ACT will come into play this year, but there's really about three different assessments you can give kids, and what they do is they take a score or kind of give each student a weighted average depending upon their score on the standardized test. So, the ACT could be one, ASVAB, Compass Test, SAT, which we don't give, but there's several of them that all of our students do have a score. Whether or not they score above state average on those exams, they, the state gives them a way, like I said, a weighted score of 1.0, 1.25, they score below, they get a different score. At the end of the day, they kind of compare where you were last year with where you are this year. Based on what I can tell, projecting our numbers from next year, we've got a very good, the number I just showed you from the ACT last year, our senior class, very good as far as the assessment side goes, and that score should, I think from my calculations, hopefully be up a hundred percent next year, which will help us. I can't tell you that we're going to improve another 11% in our academic side just because we'd be over a hundred percent, but hopefully, I mean, that's an area we just need to continue to improve that. Again, the subgroup achievement, just one we're going to continue to try to find ways to improve, but all in all, it's a very solid year, ninety-five point four percent, pretty good from where we were a year ago.
That's good. Policy updates.
You ready?
Here we go.
There's only half a dozen, I'll read them word for word real quick. Just to go through them real quick, 0320 is policy, all these policies we, we had prior to this, and the majority of them have changed because of legislation that has passed and we either had to add some wording. So, just to run through them real quick, 0320 is the one that is about the board elections, and if you're going to run for school board, basically it states that you have to have all your taxes paid, and you cannot have any kind of record of a felony or misdemeanor. And then they also added a section, because that was a big blog last year, about who's in charge of, you know, proving that, you know, like, because a lot of people are like, "It's the school district's responsibility to check," and so they added a statement at the very end that says, "It's not the school district's responsibility to verify this," that it's the county and the individual's responsibility to not file it if they know that they're not in compliance. So, that's what's added on there, and that, like I said, that was part of the legisla- legislation in prior, in last year, and so that has changed on there. 2230 is, has to do with school student enrollment, and basically, this is for non-tuition students of military families, so if a student gets placed with some friends or some other family members because their primary residence, the parents are, you know, end up going overseas or in the military, get assigned somewhere, for some reason that they're allowed to attend our school without having to pay tuition, and if the parents come back mid-year, then they, they get to finish out the school year in that school district. So, they added that language to that just to protect those students of military families so that they're not pushed out of a school district. The next one, 2710, deals with abuse reporting, and all they added to that is making sure that every school district has in their bathrooms posters for the hotline, but you also have to have the poster in Spanish. So, it's required that every bathroom has a poster in English and one in Spanish, so, and that's mandated, so we're going to do the posters. We did them already, but the regulation says that they have to be on 11 by 17 poster size, have to be exactly. So, we had to order some of that sized paper, so as soon as it comes in, we'll print those off and put them in the bathrooms. 2850 is, refers to preschool students, if a parent should request to know whether or not all the students in that classroom have proper immunization, then the school has to answer that parent and say, "No." If a particular student did not, then we have to write them back. We can't tell them what students, we have to tell them that, "No, not every student in there has their immunizations." So, that's if they request it in writing, so. So, that language was added to that. Again, all of these are because of legislation that has passed. 3160 deals with our financial operations. This is nothing different than what we're doing, we already had this policy, but one of the sections they took out, the funding mechanism of NASD, and now it's through Finera, F-I-N-E-R-A, so that's the only change in that, it's just the institution that, that is handling that. Then we go to 4120, the employment procedures. If you remember, we went to a different background check system, the Mox system, which is what the highway patrol uses. So, at the beginning of the year, actually this summer, myself and Lacy went through a training. So, the policy is to cover the school, but it also mandates in the policy that one of the portions they added to it is that you have to be trained. So, we have two employees that have been trained, and then the policy also states about the confidentiality, who you're allowed to share it with, and how you, you keep the records, and you have to have a log, and how you keep that log. So, we already have all those procedures written down, this is just the policy to go with it, so, which is great because they were telling us we were going to have to write a policy, but our policy mayor has put one together for us, so. 6116, curriculum, mandated curriculum on human sexuality. What that does is in one of the sections at the very top, it adds on there that you also need to include education on sexually transmitted diseases. That wording wasn't in there before. And then on another part of that, it talks about, you know, I brought them with me here, but I thought I could. It talks about the part where, you know, you want to talk to students about what's the preferred method, abstinence being the preferred method, and include that in the students that are not married. So, that's the second part, they added that wording into the second part. So, two short pieces they added in there, and my understanding today, I think, they revealed that there's some curriculum available that DESI has made available for health teachers to be able to incorporate that into their lessons, so. The last one on there, 6320, it added, on our internet safety policy, it added the words of internet, cell phones, text, message, chat rooms, emails, instant messaging, and that whole policy deals with making sure that the school is educating the students on how to properly and safely use those tools, which is something we've been doing, especially with our technology initiative that we're doing. So, this is just kind of specifies it. If I had to guess, next year, they're going to add social media to this list, you know, I'm just surprised it's not on there, so. So, that's the policies, and all of these, when I get a list of new policies, these ones were the ones that were mandated, so we don't have a choice, we have to approve these policies. Next month, I'll introduce you to three policies that were not mandated, in some cases, highly recommended. Next month, I'll introduce you to three policies that were not mandated, in some cases highly recommended, such as the transgender policy. But I'll email those to you ahead of time so you can kind of look at them, because those are the ones that, you know, we have to look at, and is this something we feel that we need for our school? If so, then we approach it and we deal with it and adopt it, so I'll have those for you next time. But these are the ones that are mandated that I'd like to adopt today.
Any discussion on any of the policies? Hearing none, entertain a motion to approve the policy updates as read.
So moved, Mr. Parrish.
All in favor?
I'm with a major in the regular session, we go in closed session for the purpose of considering the following. Student matters under section six ten point oh two one, sub-sections six and fourteen. Personnel under section six ten point oh two one, sub-sections three and thirteen.
Mr. Hayes, yes. Mrs. Hall.
We would be the second.
Yes, I would second that.
All right, Mr. Hayes. Yes. Mrs. Hall.
Yes.
Mrs. View. Mr. Cardwell.
Yes.
Mr. Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. Reel.
Yes.
Mr. Schenkel.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Rise to a point of war.
The executive session will be back in the boardroom, won't it, Harris?